I'd like to call order the Sparks City Council meeting of March 26, 2012 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
City Clerk Patterson is here. Council members Ratty, Lawson, Smith.
Here.
Carrigan, absent.
Schmidt.
Here.
City Manager Harry.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
McCormick.
Okay, if you'd all rise for the invocation, we have Pastor Pete Bosler from the Crosswinds Assembly of God Church here, please. Welcome Pastor.
Thank you. That's great. Lord, do you know why we're here? Because we need to make good decisions and proper decisions and intelligent decisions. We pray for your wisdom and your blessing in our city. I love this city and everybody in this room loves this city. We thank you for the mayor, the city council, the police and fire, those that protect us and cause this city to be great. Raise us up this year. We see, Lord, rays of sunshine in the clouds that are coming through for our economy and we know you're going to do good things for us. We give you praise and thanks. Amen.
Amen. Thank you for those kind words Pastor. Mr. Lawson, would you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, please join me in the pledge. My pledge of allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have comments from the public. If you'd like to speak under comments from the public, please fill out one of these cards. We'll give you three minutes. I only have one card right now. That's Mr. Tom Noblet. Come on up, Tom.
What did I say? It's all around.
Right here, just grab one of those chairs.
There, it's over there.
Now it's right here.
Pardon?
It's right here. Sit down, have a seat. We'll make you comfortable.
All right. Let me take my hat off. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, for the record, my name is Tom Noblet. I reside at 5389 Leon Drive and I'm in here representing my company, Tom's Hauling and Cleanup. I have a problem that I'm bringing to yours attention. I have two trucks, one part-time employee, and plenty of expenses. There is a charity organization in Sparks industrial area competing with my company. They do not pay for business license. Tom hauling has three, Washoe, Reno, and Sparks. Also, I've had them for 20 years on all three locations. They do not pay gas tax. Tom's hauling does. Their labor is minimum wage. Tom's hauling is not. They have their trucks given to them. Tom's hauling pays for his trucks. They get their tires tax-free. Tom's hauling does not. They get their trucks repaired tax-free and probably free. Tom's hauling doesn't. They probably get their insurance free. Tom's hauling has an industrial insurance and a commercial insurance and it's expensive. I do this for a reason. Simply, we have a charity organization operating in the city of Sparks against me and other recyclers that buy license here. I feel it's unfair. I've talked to Chet about this and I've talked to Sean about this. They've taken two accounts away from me so far and I'm afraid of losing my business. The reason they're out there is because the cardboard's up now. If the cardboard was not up, they would not be there. And it looks to me in sight that it's going to be up for a long time. And I don't have anything against charities. I don't. In fact, I give this out there once in a while. But I have ill feelings about them taking my accounts away from me and I just don't feel it's fair. So I'm ready for any type of questions you might have. I'm going to petition the city to open up Chapter 7. That's what Sean told me to do. If yous can open it up, it saved me a lot of paperwork because it could be a state problem. We have not found a problem yet, have we? Mr. Adams? We have not found a problem yet, have we?
I brought them into meeting.
So I think it's just like you selling signs. Charity organizations say, "Well, I can do that cheaper." He puts you out of business. And this is the same thing with me.
Tom, your time is up, but does anybody have any questions or you're just here for us to ask us to open up Chapter 7? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's it.
Is that the one we have to open?
Yeah.
Okay. So we can have Community Development look into it? John?
Yes, we can report back to you on that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
What purpose do you want to open Chapter 7?
City council desire to look at the ordinances with an eye toward amending them to delete the charitable exemption or?
I would think that's what we'd want to look at, yes.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
I'll need some direction.
Okay. Julia?
Not so much a question. I think actually there's relatively limited charitable exemptions that the city provides. Most of what Mr. Noblet was referring to are state exemptions and I would not be in favor of eliminating the charitable exemptions that are on the books. I will say, I don't think this is an action item in front of us, so I'll say that with a caveat that if we get to an action, I will disclose that I have obviously the CEO of the Girl Scouts and I'd want to look at that.
What did she say? I couldn't hear her.
She doesn't want to change the ordinance, but we're going to just have, I guess, a report, Sean, so we can decide what do we want to do?
Yes. Generally before the city would undertake a change in its code, a member of the council would ask for it to be on an agenda and we would place it before you for you to consider directing us to explore the change. And I took your comments, Mr. Mayor, that you wanted us to bring this back for the council to consider.
Yes, okay.
And we'll do that.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, Tom. I have another speaking card. Do you want to speak now or do you want to speak under the agenda item on 8.1, whatever it is? You want to speak now, under public comment? Okay, come on down. Raoul Nunez and Alejandro Echeverria? Did I get them right or even close?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, have a seat.
Thank you.
And you have three minutes.
Okay. We would like to say thank you for City of Sparks opening our mobile unit, United Mobile Unit Truck. That's why we came to say thank you for the opportunity and that's all we have to say.
All right. Thanks. We'll be taking that up a little later under business on 8.1, but we'll see how it goes, okay?
Okay.
So you're for us doing that then?
Oh, thank you.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Okay, next is approval of the agenda. I'd like to take 4.3 and move it up above 4.1 if you could, so we can get the folks that are here for the commendations done and out the door. So I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt.
So moved.
Ms. Ratty.
With the recommendation, James.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Next is 3.1, consideration and possible approval of minutes of the regular Sparks City Council meeting of March 12, 2012. Any additions or deletions or corrections? If not, looking for a motion, Mr. Schmidt.
Moved and approved.
Do I have a second? Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve the minutes of March 12. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, let's move on to 4.3, commendation for the Faith Forum. And Mr. Zed, is Mr. Zed still here? He's up there, okay. What I'm going to do, Rajan, is I'll read the commendation and then we'll get everybody together and hand out the commendations and take a picture. Is that all right? That's what you instructed me to do, wasn't it? You've got to realize Rajan is like a vice mayor sometimes when he comes to my office and tells me what's on the agenda and how it's going to go and how I should read this and who should be next, so I appreciate all your help. Whereas religion is complex, powerful, and much more than one particular tradition and where there are, whereas there are interconnections and independencies among religions and there are more areas of commonality than there are areas of conflict. And whereas Faith Forum is a weekly column in the Reno Gazette Journal which discusses various religious topics and has just completed one year of publication. And whereas led by the interfaith leader Rajan Zed, the Faith Forum column is a collaboration among John Mayer, publisher of the Reno Gazette Journal, Beryl Love, RGGJ Executive Director, editor, Brother Matthew Cunningham, Chancellor of the Roman Catholic Diocese of Reno, Dr. Stephen Bond, Senior Pastor of Summit Christian Church, Sparks, Nicholas Frye, Area Public Affairs Director, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Dr. Sheriff Sharif Alfas, President, Northern Nevada Muslim Community, Reverend Jikai Phil Bryan, Priest and Meditation Guide, Reno Baptist Center, Rabbi Elizabeth Bayer, Temple Beth Orr, Reno, Dr. Bradley Corbin, Bahai Teacher, Dr. Tel Gifford, Professor of Religion, Truckee Meadows Community College, Dr. Thomas Butler, Pastor, Sparks United Methodist Church, R. Bruce Brinkerhoff, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and Monique Jacobs, Faith Formation Co-Director, Roman Catholic Diocese of Reno. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, join with the city council in commending the aforementioned religious leaders for creating this consecutive, constructive dialogue which has helped to foster mutual understanding, trust, and loyalty in the community. Just one comment. This is really special. Mr. Zed and all of you people in the Faith Forum have really done a wonderful job in bringing all the cultures and the religions together. I don't recall this ever happening in the Reno area, Reno-Sparks area, and I don't know where else it happened, so my hat's off to you folks for, I think it's very beneficial to our community that our religions and faiths get together, so I really appreciate it. Rajan, you want to come down? And what we'll do is we'll hand out the commendations and then if you'd like to say a word, you'd be more than welcome to. So I'll let Rajan call out the names and then I'll hand out the certificates.
Okay, we have Beryl Love here, Executive Editor of Reno Gazette Journal. Can you, Beryl, can you come here, please?
Come here, bro. Tell me back, this is going to be all this year.
Without him, we should not be here. He's the Executive Editor, he will say a few words.
I'll be quick because I know there's a lot of business to be done today. I just want to thank the contributors of the Faith Forum and Rajan for pulling it together. The newspaper is at its best when it serves as a place for open dialogue and this group has hung with there. Many people come to us and say we have an idea for a feature and they never pull it together, but to last a year and to grow and to engage our readership and our community, on behalf of the newspaper, I want to thank all of you. Thank you.
Thanks, brother.
And now we have Dr. Stephen Bond. He's the Senior Pastor of Summit Christian Church, which is right here in Sparks on Pyramid and it is a mega church like about 3,000 congregation. Thank you, Steve. And Nicholas Frye, Area Public Affairs Director, could not be here of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. So Sharla Hales is here on his behalf and she's Associate Director of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints for Northern Nevada and she will say thank you.
It's been a marvelous opportunity to be reading and to be involved in writing and what a pleasure to step back from the mundane things of everyday life and think of things that are more important, so thank you.
Thank you, Sharla. And now we have Dr. Sharif Alfas. He's the President of Northern Nevada Muslim Community. Muslim community has a mosque on Audi Boulevard. When you're driving, you can see it and he's a professor otherwise of civil engineering in UNR.
Well, I want to thank you, Mayor Martini, and also I want to thank the Forum, actually, well, I don't know, and I, well, I'm, this is the first, because I'm very proud to be part of this forum and also part of this community, is we took some very positive steps to change the world and that's a very good thing.
And Dr. Alfas is from Egypt. Now we have Reverend Jikai Phil Bryan. He's the priest, head priest of the only Reno Buddhist church we have in Reno. We call it Reno Buddhist Center.
I grew up in Sparks, so as your pastor, as your chaplain said, I love Sparks. My dad had businesses right on B Street. I wish he were here today. It was a great thing, so thank you very, very much.
Rabbi Elizabeth Bayer, Temple Beth Orr, Reno, could not come, so Diane is here. She's on her trustees board to take her commendation.
We appreciate Elizabeth Bayer's presenting the Jewish point of view in the community and we sincerely appreciate the coordinated efforts by Rajan Zed to formulate this panel and the ability to promote positive interactions in the interfaith community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor.
Thanks, Diane. And now we have Dr. Bradley Corbin. He's a Bahai Teacher and he's a chiropractor on the side.
We can take care of that later, Julia. I want to thank the Forum. It's been really a pleasure to be involved in this program, to bring us closer together to the community. I live in Sparks, I raised my family in Sparks. I have four daughters that went through the school systems here. One's at TMCC now, one graduated from UNR and she used to videotape your council meetings for the SNCAT at one time. But thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you for the accommodation.
Now we have Dr. William Tel Gifford. He's a religion professor at Truckee Meadows, so he gives a neutral viewpoint in our Faith Forum.
And one of the hallmarks of a civilized culture is coming together in a council like this and I want to thank this council and hope that we've imitated your example a little bit in this forum where we brought people together in dialogue. Thank you so much.
Okay, I want to, this historical, a council giving commendation to a column in a newspaper. It has never been done in Sparks, I think never had been done in the country. And I thank Mayor Martini and Councilors Julia Ratty, Ed Larson, Ron Smith, Mike Carrigan, and Ron Schmidt for this. With the presence of so many religious leaders here from various world religions, we all pray God to bless the city of Sparks and make its residents happy and prosperous. And we thank Beryl Love for letting us do it in the Reno Gazette Journal, which is a Pulitzer Prize winning newspaper. And we thank the Forum for pulling it because I don't write. They are the ones who are writing it, you know. Thank you.
Come on up. It's tall on the back.
I know where I go.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you folks taking the time today to be with us and thanks for all you do for our community. We appreciate it. Okay, let's move back to 4.1, update on the economic activity at the Reno Airport Authority presented by Tina W. Iftiger and Vice President of Airport Communication Development. Hi Tina. You're not going to bring the other young man up?
No.
He's hiding.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers Adam Mayberry and Community Relations Manager. I'm also one of your trustees for the Airport Authority and it's a pleasure for me to introduce Tina Iftiger. Tina is the Vice President of Economic Development for the Airport Authority and just keeping you informed of what's happening and we wanted to provide a brief update on air service at the airport. We also want to touch a little bit upon the results of a recent economic impact study and we'll focus in is micro, is the impact of what Boeing 737 does for our community. And then we'll just conclude briefly with just a recap of some of the efforts and progress the airport's been making with the general aviation population. So having said that, I'll introduce Tina. Tina, thank you for coming. Also want to introduce Dean Schultz, who's in the audience. Dean, as you know, was recently promoted to the COO of the Airport Authority. So Dean, thank you for coming as well.
Well, good afternoon. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, council members, for having us. It's a pleasure and a privilege to update you on some of the activities at the airport. There it goes. Well, as you may be aware, we have 16 non-stop destinations, most of which go to major hubs to allow us to connect to most communities within one stop around the world. We're also very proud that we have the representation of the three alliance partners and that is a key thing because not every community has that and they represent global destinations and global connections. The three partners, for those of you who aren't aware, are Star Alliance, represented by United and US Airways at our airport, Sky Team, which is the Delta representative, and One World, which is American. So you can see how important these airlines are to our organization and our community. Just by way of comparison, Oakland Airport doesn't have that representation. They, American left two years ago and United's looking at leaving here in June, so even though we're a smaller community, we do have superior air service. To further represent that point, the key element on this one is to look at the bottom right-hand corner where it looks at seats. And we have four times the amount of air service as other markets that have the same population base as us. So again, we appreciate all the efforts from the community to fill those seats and to help us to continue to deliver on that. As you may be aware, we are having a change in service providers for our San Jose connection. The Southwest Airlines will be leaving in April, but we, within four months of this notification, were able to pull Alaska Airlines into our community on this route. This route is important for us as it will connect to more markets, as I'll show you in a minute. The reason we were able to pull this together so quickly is that our air service development team meets with about 45 different airline meetings a year. So far this year, we've already met with 14 and we have a target of 25. So we keep very active out in the community of airlines to ensure that we're growing and we have those relationships, so when something changes, we're on top of it. This is one of the new key markets or better connection to Hawaii from Alaska Airlines. Again, this shift from Southwest to Alaska is kind of a representation of what's happened in the industry. Prior to the 2008 fuel price increase, airlines used to compete for market share and brand recognition and now it's all about the ROI or the bottom line and the net proceeds. So what happened here is for five years, Southwest tried to keep the service here in our community. They drove towards capacity, meaning a full airplane. They kept bringing down the size of the aircraft to try to get there. They couldn't do it. But with Alaska, we built the business case around a different type of aircraft. So their aircraft is 76 seats, not 137, so they can drive towards that 80 to 85% capacity load that allows their ROI to work. So again, this is what you'll see more of as the market goes, moves forward. I was at the FAA forecast two weeks ago and this was very on point to what's happening within the global community. Moving on to, so what does all that do for our community besides connect us to suppliers and buyers and financial markets and our friends and family? We retain the University of Nevada Reno to analyze our economic impact for 2010 fiscal year, both direct and indirect, and the results were actually quite fabulous in such a challenging economy. As you will see, on a daily basis, the activities at the airport, direct and indirect, and that's airlines, air cargo, construction, car rentals, and everything ancillary, food and beverage that happens with the airport, is over $5.5 million on a daily basis or $2 billion annually to this region. And by this region, I mean the five counties of Washoe, Carson, Lion's Story, and Douglas. Another interesting fact that we learned was that the airport's activities represent over 8% of the entire five-region job base. We think this is significant and actually surprised us. However, it's not unusual, again, at the FAA forecast, the airline industry alone throughout the US provides about 10% of the job base in the US. As Trusty Mayberry said, the 737, which you see a lot of in our sky, in our sky, is about $100,000 for every one that's landing here. So as you look up in the sky and you think about that, wow, for every one that lands, that's about $100,000 to our community. I think that's a pretty impressive stat to be aware of and something that reminds us of how important things are. We also wanted to chat with you about general aviation. In addition to the commercial airlines, we have a huge population base of general aviation at both the Reno-Tahoe International Airport and the Reno-Stead Airport. We have a newly formed committee that's been going forward for a few months now. It is chaired by Trusty Katzman and the Vice Chair is Trusty Bill Eck. And we have been meeting monthly. We've, things have been going so well that they have decided to move it to quarterly. In addition to that forum, we have been working in different formats with the Reno-Tahoe Aviation Association. They represent a group of general aviation users on our airfield in Reno. We're working towards a new five-year opportunity for them on the west side to stay there in the facilities they're currently in. And this will allow them and the community to demonstrate demand for potential new development of hangars on the east side of the airfield. So we're very happy that this is moving forward well. We've had extensive talks and we look forward to continuing that relationship. With that, I am open to questions.
Questions. Ron? Ron Smith?
Tina, did I see the figure in there? You said 274,000?
Tina, did I see the figure in there? You said 274,000 jobs? What was that?
That's the region, right?
264,000. For the region?
Mm-hmm, for the five-county region.
And what's the 22,000 jobs?
That's the number that the Reno-Tahoe Airport Authority, both airports, direct and indirect, contribute to that five-county region.
Thank you. And I'd just like to thank you both, because these quarterly reports mean a lot to us, and you've carried through and come to see some. Thank you for that.
Anyone else? Trustee Mayberry?
Yes, yes.
Any comments?
Senator, be fine, you know. Thank you. If there's anything we can do, you know, hopefully you're well-informed and engaged. So to the extent that we can help, let us know.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. We get emails and stuff too, I think, which helps us keep up to speed on what's going on at the airport at all times. And Dean, thank you so much for what you do out there. And Tina, thank you. And we have one more comment. Mr. Lawson?
I had the pleasure of having been at a meeting with Chris Bart the other day. And publicly, I think I told you this in private, Adam, but she praised you on your communication skills with the City of Sparks and getting us back the information. And you continue to follow up on that, so thank you.
You're welcome.
It's good for us to know what's going on.
Thank you.
I wasn't sure about you at first, but you're starting to grow on me. Thanks, Adam.
Did he call you a fungus, or? Okay. Thanks, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the update. Okay, let's move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Mr. Lawson?
Yes. I'd like to pull 5.6 for discussion.
Okay. Anyone else? Not looking for a motion?
Did we miss the 4.2?
Mr. Carey, I'm sorry. Did I miss an item?
Did we miss 4.2?
Oh, my goodness, I'm sorry. How could I have done that?
He was all set to go, too. You should have seen him.
4.2, yeah.
Let's move back to...
Sean thought he was getting out easy.
4.2, "Presentation on AB 449 Economic Development for the State." Mr. Carey?
I thought it was a sigh of relief, or I don't know.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's my privilege to speak to you today on behalf of the Recharge Coalition and as your City Manager on a topic which is very important to Nevada, and that's our economic development efforts. They were largely aided by our legislature working across party lines in creating AB 449, which revamped the economic development strategies for our state. And since July 1st of last year, we have been working factually to implement those. We did form a coalition, and our coalition found a motto, and let's do this together. And I wanted to tell you that Washto County and the City of Reno, Edon, the Chamber of Commerce have been particularly great partners in rolling up their sleeves and working together to find our way through this new opportunity provided to us by the state. We do include education, the universities, the K-12 with Heath Morrison and his staff, as well as our community colleges. And our reach does extend beyond Washto County, as Story County and Fernley are with us on this, as is NNDNA, which is our Northern Nevada Development Authority, working out of Carson City. We've been meeting since August of 2011. We did one outreach effort to the larger region in November to explain what the opportunities were and to take public input. All of that input is on the rechargenevada.org website, if you wish to look at that. And we followed that up with a meeting of the mayors and board chairs from a six-county region, asking them to sign a statement of intent, which really centered on let's do this together. Let's form a region which can reach farther than we've reached in the past and reach together to reach the heights that we can attain as a state. And that statement of intent is under consideration in the six-county area. Pleased to report to you, it's been approved by Reno, Sparks, Washto County, Story County, and the City of Fernley, with consideration occurring in the larger geographic area. One of the aspects that's new to our states is the use of catalyst funds. This was endowed or funded, if you will, by the state legislature with $10 million. That money will be available statewide for distribution in projects anywhere in the state of Nevada. And it's really the first time we have made these types of inroads to entice businesses. Very important tool when you look at the enticements which are being done in many other states. Mike Carrigan, for example, explained to me that the state of Tennessee bonded their economic development money and have something like $3 billion to work for their state's prosperity. But this is a good move, one which has to be, anytime you deal with incentives, must be managed very carefully. And our state is working on criteria by which projects will move forward. Obviously, with a large geographic area like the state of Nevada, and the opportunities we have, it's a great place to live and work, $10 million will not go a long ways. But it could be just that difference that needed by someone looking at Northern Nevada, to buy equipment, to close a deal that's already where they've come very close to making their decision in Nevada. And we look for that funding to go to work, to close some of the deals in the competition that we have in the seven western state region. There's also an additional $2.6 million that's been available for economic development activities through what are called RDAs. And we look at RDAs as redevelopment agencies, and the state looks at them in a larger sense of what does it take to get regional development authorities up and running. And for us, that will involve NNDNA and Edon working in a new partnership. The Governor's Office of Economic Development, which is that new acronym GOED that you'll hear a lot about, is working on the criteria for the catalyst funding. Actually, they approved their draft of the catalyst funding just last Thursday in a meeting, and it's currently in the process of dissemination and will begin to be a very active tool as we move this catalyst fund forward. It is going to have different criteria that will be tailored to each region in the state, but tailored after the Brookings Institute study of what Nevada's true opportunities are for growth and moving our economy forward. They've looked at our strengths and weaknesses, opportunities for us to grow into the future, and these funds will be used in those areas. What's different in economic development today is this will be performance-based. One of the united fronts from our legislature and our executive branch was the days of grant funding are over. They're going to be performance-based grants. And if you're hitting your marks, you'll move forward. If you're not, they'll begin to challenge you on that. So results will be rewarded in our new system. We need to show success. Obviously, $10 million is a lot of money to a state like Nevada that's struggling on so many fronts to provide government services. And it's hopeful that this money can be that closing ounce or dollar that gets someone across the finish line. And we're hoping that will be well underway by the time we get to the start of the next legislative session. To go beyond the statement of intent, one of the things we're working on is to form an interlocal agreement within that six-county area. I often refer to that as to find the coalition of the willing, those that want to work together. I think we're served by a great airport, from the presentation you just had, and a lot of people arrived to the Reno-Tahoe Airport looking to move businesses anywhere in this six-county area. That is the airport. That may be the very logical line for us to serve our communities. We are working with the Chamber. We're working with Edon and NNDNA and the Governor's Office to make sure this interlocal agreement provides a loose framework, not a new level of government, not a government that's going to have structure to it, but a simple place where we can refresh ideas, bounce off branding, bounce off agendas, and look at how our criteria can best be used here in Northern Nevada. Because, let's face it, Nevada has very distinct regions, and we want to tailor this program of economic development to hit the unique assets we have here in Northern Nevada. What happens in Carson City and Douglas County, here in Washto County, Story County, is very different than the opportunities that are present in development down in Clark County. The same can be said from the rural areas. When you look at the opportunities in mining, for example, in the Winemucca and Elko areas. So this is a chance for us to set a loose framework of setting an agenda that keeps us all moving forward. One of the things in the catalyst funding is that the government of the state will have to pass this catalyst money through a local government. So that will be one of the structures that we want to be sure that every town and every county in our region is ready to go, so that no one loses an opportunity to get to the catalyst funds. So training and developing the processes are going to be very, very important to that. And we also really can go a long way into the future by having an economic cooperation. It was very historic on February 24th, when the mayors and chairs did gather at the Truckee Meadows Community College. It was probably the first time they had all been in a room in some 18 to 20 years. And I think it was a good starting point. I think all of those mayors went back to their local jurisdictions to say, let's do this together. And we'll certainly find those dreams coming back as this interlocal agreement moves forward. There is a great change occurring. As I mentioned, the economic development authorities, RDAs if you will, will have to work together in this super region. And they've formed really two subregions. And we're blessed to have the ability for the Edon group to serve us here in Northern Nevada along the I-80 corridor, and then NNDNA able to serve those folks down in the Carson-Douglas and stretching out along Highway 50, as you will. And we believe that their new partnership, which was signed into an agreement in February, will really carry us forward. As you know, our governor established in three years to have 50,000 jobs here in the state. And if you simply looked at that in one dimension only, and to base that upon population here, we certainly think in our region it's attainable that Edon come up with the creation of 7,500 jobs. And Mike Kersminski and the team at Edon are well underway with efforts to make that number achievable, and I fully expect that they will surpass that. And there's no reason we would limit that, but that is the kind of thing where we are setting performance criteria that we're going to go after. So Edon has those numbers, and NNDNA has similar numbers and opportunities to focus on their part of our region as well. You know, here in Sparks, we've been focusing on improving our business processes. This came from the council and the mayor themselves. As you set our strategic goals, and you set your priorities each year. And what we wanted to do is make sure our business processes were moving at the speed of the new normal for businesses that are out there today. We've done that by holding the lines on or reducing fees. One of the examples was the efforts of Councilman Lawson to push for us to look at our special use permit fees, to make sure that those were in balance with the community. And those were successfully changed. We've also looked at our discretionary entitlements, to make sure that our zoning code, which was developed many years ago, was actually appropriate and easy for those folks to do industrial businesses and protected them from changes which can come without a properly functioning industrial code. We also looked at the longstanding six-month period that a business has when they close their doors to reopen without using their use permit. And this council recently approved a change that gives people two years, which greatly improves your ability to work inside of a very tight real estate market, to preserve your prior investment, and also reach your new customers that we need to bring into our community. We have a consultant contract on your agenda today to look at the low-hanging fruit in our zoning code. It doesn't propose to fix everything in our zoning code, but we do want to ask the development community to come forth, speak to us about what changes they want to see, and move those forward, to take down even further barriers that were present in our system. What's ahead, our community development department, our community services department, that'll cost me a dollar, is looking to right-size our transit-oriented development district. It's a policy which grew out of our regional plan that we need to question ourselves on. What's the right balance? What's the right use of that tool, and in what right areas of our community? It can be a great aid to development in the densification and reuse of property, but it also can be a hindrance in areas where the existing growth pattern isn't associated with those types of things. We want to do a focused marketing effort, redevelopment, and master plans within our community. The great opportunity we have with the revitalized Kylie Ranch project, for example, has a tremendous business park, one that doesn't exist anywhere else in our region in my mind. And we certainly want to look at what we can do to focus their marketing efforts to attract new and expanding businesses right here into Sparks, Nevada. We want to continue to complement the revitalized efforts of regional economic development and put forth some specific initiatives. And this will be more of your discussion as you set priorities for future budget years. But remember, this was a strategic objective. So we need to take this at the pace of change that we can afford the resources for, and also for what we can attain the most bang for our buck on. And then, one of the things that's still out there that I want to make sure we all understand is, we do need to overhaul our city's development ordinances. They've been written and rewritten many times over many years. And frankly, starting with a fresh piece of paper and a typewriter by the experienced staff you have, the experience of our development community and the business who work with us, we think we can write something which is more right-sized for the community's challenges we're facing today. Some of those latter things, in your long-range thinking, of course, will require you to look at resources. And these are just some of the ideas that are out there. The price tag for a development ordinance overhaul would be about $150,000. Could be done over a couple of years, in phases and segments. Getting through a development process with speed and accuracy is one of the great challenges that we have in today's national economy, where businesses are going to communities who get it right the first time. And we find that there might be a role for a contract person to work as a facilitator and an ombudsman, so that we don't miss the dates of new developers, expanding businesses, or those of small business owner, in terms of working through what is sometimes a very cumbersome and state-regulated process. Keep in mind, many of the dates that control our process are actually written into state law. And so our ability to hit it right the first time is ever so important. The other one would be to look at someone working full-time on making sure that the individual brand, great example of our brand is what we've done with tourism and marketing. And could that effort be expanded, to look at branding, the way we approach economic development as a community as we move forward? With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I wanted to thank Kathy Cluett and Armando Anelis for working with me as the Sparks team as we've confronted this challenge.
Questions for Sean? Okay. Sean, thanks for the hard work. Appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to consent items. Mr. Lawson, would you like to pull a consent item?
Still like to pull item 5.6 for discussion.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Ratty?
Move through 5.1 through 5.5.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Move by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve 5.1 through 5.5. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, 5.6, "Consideration of Possible Approval of the Purchase of 800 megahertz radio equipment from Daly and Wells Communications in the Amount of $339,409.33."
Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon. Andy Block, Sparks Fire Chief. For the record, I also have with me Sparks Fire Captain and Vice Chair of the Nevada Communications Steering Committee, Jake Conley. Today, we're asking for your approval to purchase 800 megahertz radio equipment from Daly and Wells Communications in the amount of $339,409. This money was acquired through the 2011, or a portion of, through the 2011 Homeland Security Assistance to Firefighters Grant. Since October of 1999, City of Sparks has been a member of the regional 800 megahertz radio system by agreement. This is an enhanced digital access communication system provided by the Harris Communications System, a proprietary system. Per the agreement, the members are required to purchase compatible equipment. Because this is a proprietary system, and per the interlocal agreement, the City of Sparks procurement and RFP procedures are not applicable. This is in accordance with NRS 338.115, Section 3 and 4. Currently, Daly and Wells Communications is the only manufacturer's representative assigned by Harris Communications to sell EDAX. We would ask your support in moving forward with the purchase of the 800 megahertz radios' equipment from Daly and Wells. That's the end of our presentation. Thank you.
Questions for Chief or Captain Conley? Mr. Lawson?
Well, Chief, number one, I'm going to support this. I just wanted to bring this to the attention of the public, that this is... I just wanted to bring this to the attention of the public, that this is a sole-source provider. And there are, from my understanding, that this system will be going away in the coming years. I don't know, I haven't got a straight answer. Somewhere between two and five years, it's going away. So there's an opportunity to look at a new system for not only this area, but for the entire state. And one of the formats that's out there, the platform that's out there is P-25, which allows multiple different vendors to bid. So from my way of thinking, from the days of when my cellphone, I think, cost thirty-five hundred dollars when the first time it was made, back in the eighties, is now, you get one free if you sign up for a minimum plan, you know, if you had to buy one, they're about fifty dollars. I can tell you that, having worked for Motorola in a past life, that the cost of the radios is not twenty-five hundred dollars to manufacture. So I just am encouraging and getting this out, that we look at a system in the future, because I know there's another proprietary system that might be proposed here, that we look at something that could be competitive. I think that will help the entire government, because at the same time, you guys, you guys, I guess it's us, all of us, in the government are really the only two-way radio users anymore. Businesses don't use two-way radios any longer. They use cellphones and other Nextel-type products. So just bringing this to the attention of the public, that this is a decision that will come up, and I understand that Mr. Conley is going to be a part of that in the future. And I just highly encourage that we look at something where we get competitive bids. Just no good, to me, comes out of having a sole-source on anything in the long term. And the price for twenty-five hundred dollars for a portable two-way radio that I believe Ron and I could go down to Walmart and purchase two handy talkies right now for fifty bucks. So, you know, not to say that these would do that, but you understand the point, is the prices will drop significantly if there's not sole sourcing.
Understood.
So with that, then, I'm just going to make a motion that we approve item 5.6. And Jake, if you want to add anything, please do.
Well, Mr. Councilmember, you know, sole source is not the best way to go, but the system we are buying into is not only a regional system, but is a statewide system. And as it currently stands, we have to buy equipment that is compatible with that system. The equipment we are buying is P-25 compatible, or capable. It is seven hundred and eight hundred megahertz capable. So as we move forward in the future into newer systems, these radios will be able to fall into those systems, whether they're seven hundred, eight hundred megahertz, whether they're a Harris system, or if they go to another, another trunking system throughout the state. But to be able to, you know, provide for our firefighters in this system, regionally and statewide, because our radios right now can travel anywhere in the state of Nevada and have communications back to our dispatch center. So we have to stay with the EDAX portion of that for the time being, but hopefully in the future, and hopefully in buying radios that will allow us to move to whatever new system comes forward in the future.
I agree with you. It's kind of stuck there where it is, but I'm just asking that we look at other options for the future. I know that it will come up.
Okay, motion, Mr. Lawson?
I move to approve item 5.6.
Do you have a second? Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve agenda item 5.6. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, gentlemen. Next is 6.1, appointments to the Western Regional Water Commission. Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City of Sparks has one appointment to the Regional Water, Western Regional Water Commission, and this is for a two-year term. The City of Reno and the City of Sparks also jointly appoint one other member. Councilmember Ron Smith is the member to the WRWC, representing the City of Sparks, and Gino Martini is the jointly-appointed member of the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. Both of these terms do expire at the end of this month. Reno will be considering the reappointment of Mayor Martini at their meeting on Wednesday. And at this time, the council could consider the recommended motion of reappointment of both gentlemen or decide otherwise. Thank you, sir.
Questions? Volunteers? Motion? Ms. Ratty?
I move to confirm the appointment of Ron Smith to the Western Regional Water Commission, representing the City of Sparks, and Mayor Gino Martini, representing the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility for the two-year term ending March 31st, 2014.
Do you have a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Lawson to make the appointments as recommended by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 6.2, consideration-
Can I just make a quick comment?
Please.
Who, our question, who caught that they were going to expire and that we needed to do it?
Probably Linda.
Actually, the Regional Water Commission called.
Okay. I just want to say that it's great that we're, however it's happening, that we're catching these on time, doing them in the timeframe that it was supposed to be done with the bodies as it happened. Two thumbs up.
Yeah, I'm sure most bodies contact us when it's time, do they not? Yeah. Okay, 6.2, consideration of possible approval of a contract with Clarion Associates in the amount of thirty thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars to perform a zoning code assessment. Mr. Ornelas?
Mayor Martini, members of the council, Armando Ornelas, city planner. This agenda item asks the city council to award professional services contract in the amount of thirty thousand five fifteen to a team comprised of Clarion Associates and CFA to conduct the analysis of Title 20 and related documents like the TOD standards and the design standards manuals. The analysis is intended to identify, one, potential barriers to Title 20 to develop an investment in our community, and to recommend ways in which these barriers may be addressed through subsequent updates of the code. We got here by issuing a request for proposals and received four responses. A committee of city staff, two private planners, and the Sparks Planning Commissioner reviewed the submittals and interviewed two teams. And the review committee unanimously recommends the city council award Clarion and Associates a contract to perform this analysis. Angela Fuss of CFA is here to represent the consultant team if you have any questions for them. And that concludes my presentation.
Mr. Schmidt?
I have no questions.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be happy to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to award Clarion Associates a professional services contract in the amount of thirty thousand five seventeen-
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Damn it. I'm sorry, Ron, we got a public comment. I apologize. Uh, Ms. Brandhorst, we have a public comment?
Yes.
Now, I notice on here you're attending and concerning evictions and stealing homes and bonds.
Yes.
Now, that has nothing to do with this agenda item, so if you want to talk on this agenda item, you're going to have to speak with, speak to the subject, which is a contract with Clarion Associates to do zoning code assessments.
Why would they be changing the zoning code?
Well, come on down. And if you're not on subject, I will let you know, okay?
All right.
You have three minutes.
All right. Yes, my name is Kathy Brandhorst, Lisa Marie Pressley, John Benay Ramsey, John Steele, and I'm also the United States President. I just wanted to let you know, some of these problems with the real estate offices is what they are. And I believe, you know, sometimes if the, if there's an empty lot, who's going to purchase that lot? Is it the real estate, or are they really actually going to sale it to people? Who's going to be responsible for a property that doesn't belong to anybody else except they say that they can sell it?
Ms. Brandhorst, this has to do with a contract or whether-
I know. There's a lot of contracts going on, and they don't really have anything to do with the property that they are going to purchase.
Okay.
And the owner never gets involved. They sell it, and then the owner does not, I mean, has no idea that it's been done.
Kathy, that has nothing to do with the contract we're looking at for Clarion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Smith, you, Schmidt, you may make a motion. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to award Clarion Associates a professional service contract between the City of Sparks and Clarion Associations, the amount of thirty thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars, provide professional services outline an attached contract to Clarion Proposal and-
Mr. Smith?
Second.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to also say thank you to staff for their time in reviewing this matter and bringing this back to us and allowing our local folks to go ahead and bid on it. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve 6.2. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Mr. Lawson is gone, so please, please display. Okay, passed unanimously with those present. Next is 6.3, review, consideration, possible approval of an exclusive negotiating agreement between the City of Sparks, the Redevelopment Agency of Sparks and 1864 Real Estate Development LLC for redevelopment of 916 and 918 Victorian Avenue. Mr. Ornelas?
Martini, members of the council, Armando Ornelas, city planner. This item asks both, or first, the city council and then on the Redevelopment Agency agenda, the Redevelopment Agency Board of Directors, to consider granting an exclusive negotiating agreement to an entity led by Justin Quinton, who is here with his legal counsel. The Redevelopment Agency acquired the property at 916 and 918 Victorian Avenue back in 2008 from Pacific Pond Brokers. You may recall that this was part of a package transaction, if you will, that was necessary to acquire the property at 1246 Victorian Avenue from Pacific Pond. It's comprised of two parcels totaling seven thousand square feet in size, that's the land area, with two connected buildings totaling a little over three thousand square feet in size. The existing buildings on the property are in poor shape and in need of extensive electrical plumbing repairs, as well as you'd need to do ADA-related modifications and seismic reinforcement in order to use the existing buildings. Justin Quinton, who is the principal owner of Cantina Los Sombres, a restaurant and bar located in an adjacent building, has requested an exclusive opportunity to prepare a proposal to redevelop the property for a restaurant and bar use, and if, when we bring this back to the city council and agency board, if the proposal were approved at that time, to have the opportunity to own and redevelop the property according to that proposal. Mr. Quinton has indicated that he believes that all or a majority of the existing buildings should be demolished in favor of a new, larger structure, at least five thousand square feet in size and possibly as large as eighty-five hundred square feet in size. In terms of the location of the property, just so that we can get your bearings, pyramid is here on this end. Here's Victorian Avenue. The museum is here. The C Street parking garage is here. Great Basin is here. And the Cantina Los Sombres is located in these buildings here. And these are the two properties that are owned by the Redevelopment Agency, highlighted in the blue. The proposed exclusive negotiating agreement, or ENA, is the acronym, would grant 1864 Real Estate Development LLC, which is Mr. Quinton's development company, up to six months to prepare and submit for city and agency consideration of development proposal for the property. So the whole thing is intended to be done within six months. In order to proceed to the DDA stage, Mr. Quinton must submit a development proposal to the agency and the city within four months, approval of the ENA. The requirements for the submittal are specified in Attachment A to the ENA, but in general include a market analysis, schematic plan, projected development and operating budgets, a land value analysis, financing plan, and a project schedule. The ENA's proposed terms obligate the city and the agency to negotiate exclusively with Mr. Quinton regarding the possible transfer, disposition, or use of the property for the term of the ENA or the six months. It does not, however, grant Mr. Quinton the right to acquire the property. That would have to be done by a subsequent agreement. Staff believes Mr. Quinton's interest represents a good opportunity for the agency to see the redevelopment of this property in a manner consistent with the town center redevelopment plan. And essentially, what we would be looking for from this would be a new building where we now have two obsolete buildings. So that's the gist of the exclusive negotiating agreement and what it calls for. I can address, to the best of my ability, any questions you may have. And again, Mr. Quinton and his legal counsel are here as well, if you have questions for them.
Questions for Armando or for Mr. Quinton? Mr. Quinton, would you like to say anything, or your representative, Mr. Gordon? Come on down, just give your name for the record and-
I'm Justin Quinton. I guess I would just like to say thank you to the City of Sparks and the Redevelopment Agency for considering the opportunity, and I definitely look forward to seeing the project through to fruition, and just want to say thank you.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, I noticed that you're asking for six months, or giving you four months. Is that a, I'm not what, not sure why the difference in the math there.
Just got to have a proposal done by four months.
For the record- For the record, Garrett Gordon, on behalf of 1864 Real Estate Development Councilman. Four months, after four months, Mr. Quinton's company is required to deliver the items on Attachment A. So a lot of the due diligence will take place in the four months. Then the next two months would be if the due diligence looks clean and it looks like it could be a feasible project, then it would be negotiating a development agreement with your staff to bring back to both this body and the Redevelopment Agency.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Smith? Do you have a plan right now, or are you going to extend the current restaurant, or is this going to be a whole new restaurant, or do you even know?
This will be a whole new restaurant, possibly two restaurants on the space.
Okay. Thank you. And if anybody's been in that space, it definitely needs work.
Yes.
Does a hand grenade come to mind?
It looks like it's already went off. Okay. There's some of those bombs that we were talking about.
Yeah.
I think so.
Ms. Ratty?
Well, and that's exactly what I was going to say. I've had the opportunity to tour those very special parcels myself, and there's not a lot to be salvaged there. So I'm just extremely excited that it's a local business that already has a presence on Victorian Square that's interested in coming in and working with the city to make this better and make Victorian Square prosper. So I fully support this, wholeheartedly even, and would like to make a motion to approve the exclusive negotiating agreement between the City of Sparks, the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Sparks, and 1864 Real Estate Development LLC for the redevelopment of 916 and 918 Victorian Avenue, and wish you all the success possible.
Mr. Smith?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve agenda item 6.3. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Mr. Quinton, thank you.
Thank you, city councilman.
Really for your willingness to do something down there. It's good to see somebody's going to put some investment, hopefully, into the City of Sparks. Believe me, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, 6.4, Mr. Krutz, consideration of possible approval to terminate the contract with Contract Sweeping Services. I guess the entire council has received a letter from Contract Sweeping about their intent to not further themselves with the contract when it comes up, so, Mr. Krutz, give us, give us the lowdown.
For the record, Neil Krutz, Deputy City Manager for Community Services. I'm here today with a request for you to continue this item to your April 9th meeting. We are, we are short one councilmen today who had expressed an interest in being here for that. And as you recall, at the previous meeting, we had continued it there because we were looking for a full council to consider this item. Once we let the Contract Sweeping folks know that, that Mr. Carrigan wasn't going to be here today, they scheduled themselves to be doing other things today, and they're not, not here in the audience. So with that, staff would, would request that you go ahead and continue this to April 9th so that we can have a full discussion with the Contract Sweeping folks in the room.
Questions? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In light of the recent letter from Contract Services, is staff position the same?
Yes, sir, it is.
You want to go ahead and just cancel it now, even though they said that they're not going to just start the rebid process, because you're going to need a couple months for bidding for July 1st? months for bidding for July 1, so you're willing to go ahead and say fire them right now?
Yeah, well, we would ask you, actually, we would like to have them in the room so that we could have that, that full discussion. But the reason behind our decisions to stick with the recommendation we brought to you in January is that there is still about a quarter of the year left to perform under that contract. We, as your staff, still find that we're having performance problems on a number of fronts with them, so that's why our, our recommendation to you remains unchanged.
Going for blood, huh?
Going for improved service.
Mr. Smith?
And you want us to continue it, you're not-
Yes, sir. I would ask you to continue it today so that we can have this discussion with the full council and with the contractor in the room together.
Okay, and I'll make that motion to continue this to our next scheduled meeting.
You have a second, Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Question, Neil, are we going to have enough time to rebid this then? If we get rid of them or if we decide to cancel the contract, we have 30 days, is that what it is, or 60 days?
We're required to give them 30 days' notice that the contract may be canceled. We have actually met that criteria already.
Okay.
In terms of rebidding, certainly in light of the letter where they've indicated that they're not interested in bidding for next year, it does make sense for city staff to initiate that process regardless of the outcome of this item, so that we can have a contractor under contract, a new contractor under contract, to start on July 1. So that's actually something we will work with our, with our purchasing folks, you know, starting here in the next week or so.
So their contract runs through June 30?
June 30, yes.
Okay, so, all right, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe this question is two weeks, two weeks from now, we decide to go ahead and cancel the contract for staff recommendations. What's Plan B? Who does, on Tuesday morning after council, who does street sweeping?
The city staff will pick that up for the period of time until we have another contractor on board.
So they have enough time in their schedule between now and July 1 to do all the streets?
What we will do is we will delay other scheduled maintenance activities so that we can provide this service to our city.
Mr., is that it?
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
He answered my question. I was going to ask the same question.
Okay, is the motion on the floor? Everyone understand the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, continue till March 9?
April 9.
April 9, yeah, close enough. Okay. 6.5, consideration and possible approval of a resolution approving a change to the voting structure of the Board of Directors of the Truckee Meadows River Flood Management Authority, and urging the authority to extend funds and take actions to assure that an environmental impact statement for the Truckee River Flood Management Project is completed. Mr. Krutz.
Again, for the record, Neil Krutz, Deputy City Manager for Community Services, here today with this item. In front of you is a resolution and a proposed amendment to the interlocal agreement that created the Truckee River Flood Management Authority, and the resolution seeks three actions by, by the council today. The first is approval of that interlocal agreement amendment that would change the unanimous voting requirement, something back to very close as to what was proposed to you by the staffs of the three agencies about 14 months ago, to where the vast majority of the business would be done on a simple majority basis with certain items such as the financial items, changes to the flood control master plan, if you will, requiring a supermajority. Also, any regulatory, any regulatory requirement changes would have to be a supermajority too, so that it wouldn't be possible for any two of the local partners to say, bond a third to change their code. You'd have to, needing a five out of six vote there, you'd need at least one, one member from each, each agency in order to move forward with that. This is all coming to us on the, on the heels of, I think, what's fair to describe as been a very difficult year since we, we established that. Not a whole lot has been able to be accomplished by the, by the authority, and in taking a look at this, this actually was, was proposed by Washoe County and approved by them on the 13th of this month. As, as your staff, I, I think that going to a, a simple majority for most business and a super for, for some of the more important things makes a lot of sense and, and will allow us to get down to business of the flood protection that we owe our community, and, and not essentially, or from, from my perspective, seeing that process held hostage by agendas that at least outwardly appear as to be about anything but flood control. With that, I'll be happy to try and answer any questions that you have.
Questions, I see, we have Jay Aldine, the so-called director of the Flynn. I'm sorry about that, Jay. The temporary, I guess I want to say director, de facto.
Deputy.
Deputy director, okay. Here, if there's any, any questions, so, questions, Mr. Smith?
Neil, the way I understand this is, I mean, it goes to the county, it's coming to us, and then it goes to Reno. If all three entities approve the changes, it still has to go back to the flood project for consensus vote, is it?
Yes, it does.
And what happens if that is turned down? What if it's voted down again?
Then-
We're right back to where we were.
Then we are where we are today. There will be no change.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Lawson.
So we have, we pass through all three entities, then it goes back and it has to pass 6-0 at the flood board.
Yes, it does. And, and one of the changes, proposed changes in the interlocal agreement is to pull the authority out of votes dealing with the interlocal agreement. The thought there being that it's the three local governments, so to speak, that created or gave up the power to create this, this authority, and it should be the three local governments and the three local governments only that have the authority and the power to make changes to it, that the authority itself should not have to consent, if you will, to, to change it to the interlocal agreement.
So, simple math says that one person disagrees, this never gets passed.
And that's essentially where we have been for a number of months, is, is in that very, that very seat.
And unfortunately, it's turned out to be a dysfunctional board, and I don't see that passing forward, but-
Well, in retrospect, I think if all three entities sent a message that they want something changed. Now, take for instance, me, if this, if this, I'm, myself and Mr. Smith are voting on that. We'll be voting on it. To me, if this council says they want to change the voting structure to a majority vote and a supermajority on certain items, then I would certainly take your advice, because you're my city council and you have a voice at the table, just like I do. So I'm counting on if this does get changed, that the representatives that represent their entities will abide by what their councils have said. So I think it does have a chance.
I hope so, too.
Yeah, I think it does have a chance. Ms. Ratty?
Question about, is there anything that says when that vote has to be scheduled?
There is not, no. No, but you, the county considered on the 13th, you've got it today, Reno has it on Wednesday of this week. We've got, the Flood Authority Board meets the second Friday of every month.
And we also have it on our joint meeting on the 19th, just in case something goes wrong.
Yeah.
Say that, Julian, one more comment. I got Mr. Smith first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had a chance to talk to both Mr. Smith and the mayor and some staff on, on this item, and it really is kind of reality check time when it comes to this stuff. We have, as City of Sparks, taken advantage of the veto power of one individual to make sure that we weren't overrun, and the reality check is, we have to remember who we are in the City of Sparks, that we're not the big boys on the block. We have two much bigger boys on out there, the blocks, and any time taken, go ahead and, and with simple majority, do what they want to to the City of Sparks. And this is one of the things that was talked about when we did the JPA and stuff, and it was, it was agreed upon, we would continue that. I'm not so sure that because we have two individuals that, for personal reasons, don't want to do what's right for the community. I mean, this is obvious. We all know where we're at here. But taking and going and saying we're going to change the rules that up to this time have been very effective and beneficial to all three entities that are involved into it, I'm not sure this is the right thing to do. This is where we get ourselves into trouble, because I can guarantee you, you know, history repeats itself. In a couple of years after we do this, we may find ourselves, as a board here, looking at, what did we do here? Because we have no say-so. Somebody else has a say-so in what's beneficial to our, our community. So I, I think what needs to be done here is that the public body that Mr. Mayor talks about has to sit down and deal with this issue of their representatives on this committee and find a way to get this issue resolved so that flood control can continue moving forward. I'm not going to say it's never going to happen again, that you'd have one individual try to block something, but this has worked for this city council in the past on that same board to block stuff that, if I remember right, a $42 million softball field was one of the items that we decided we didn't want to go ahead and have another entity. It was inappropriate to have in, in the project. I think there's some real benefit to the City of Sparks of having the existing structure that's there, and I think that we should not go be changing structure just because we've got a couple of people that in eight months are not going to be around to make those decisions, and I think it's up to the, to the entity that's having these problems get them worked out.
I think Mr. Lawson had a comment, then Mr. Smith?
Just one quick one, and Mr. Aldine, I want to thank you for your patience in all of this, too, and you have the patience that I don't have, and you're doing a great job, so keep it up. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
You know, I'm going to disagree with Mr. Smith on some of his comments. Number one is, this is one of the few committees in the region where we have equal votes. Nobody can, can vote in something right now without us wanting it to get done. And on this project, we are the big dog in this project. We have the most to lose. We have to stand up for the City of Sparks, and we're trying, and it's not working right now. So the original vote when we formed the JPA was to have a majority or a supermajority, and it was changed because Reno has to change it. And that was, we gave in to that point because, as you said, we've had, I think, something like 1,300 votes previous to this, all consensus voting where we passed it. In the last two to three months, we've stopped completely. The Corps is not even working on our project right now, and we have to show that being the, the partner that we are with them, that we can move forward together.
I'm torn here, too. You know, originally, when we started this thing, we, we were taking a gas, I guess, thinking about we had to do everything by majority vote. I mean, by consensus vote. It worked very well for a long time, even though we didn't get everything done we wanted to get done. We were never bogged down like we're bogged down now. I agree with Mr. Schmidt on one respect. It's, it's one entity right now that's trying to hold things up. It's two persons personally that have taken a stance that I, I don't necessarily agree with, although it gives us a veto power, it also gives everybody else a veto power, too. So, you know, anybody that wants to stop this project in the future can, can stop it with just one vote, which, I don't know, I know our congressional people are looking at it. I've discussed this with some of them, and they don't necessarily like the consensus vote either. So I would, and we, we tried to hold out, like Ron said, for a majority vote when we formed the JPA. But again, you know, we gave in because we could see that it wasn't going to pass, and we wanted to get on with business. And I think we've done that in the past with this consensus vote. We, we've let some things go that we probably shouldn't have let go because we didn't want to stop the project, because we know how important it is to the City of Sparks. So I agree with some of the things he said. He's right. There's, there's a couple of people that want to hold the process up and hold us hostage now, but I, I think for the future of the project, I have enough confidence in Mr. Smith and my ability for right now to be able to put forward our projects and the things that we need to have and make a case for him. So I'd like to see us pass this. Ms. Ratty?
I definitely see both sides of this as well. I, for me, I think the, the fact that there are the items of significance that are, that do require a supermajority gives me the comfort to be able to support the, going, going to the item as it's proposed.
Mr. Krutz? One final point that I would like to make is really the, the timing that we're in and the schedule that we are under, where, as you correctly mentioned, the Army Corps is finding themselves in a pause mode and, and not working actively on our project. They do want to draw this study to a close. It's dropped on for way too long. They are looking at a, somewhere in the $40 billion to $60 billion range of a backlog of, of flood control studies and needs around our country. And so I, my opinion is that the Army Corps is looking for reasons to cut us loose at this point in time. I think that lends some urgency to moving this project forward so that, so that the, you know, the authority can, can take actions to, to get us to that chief's report, to get us to the environmental studies that are key to any future funding coming our way. And, and I think that, you know, that, that sense of urgency is something to consider as you, as you decide how you're going to cast your vote today.
Good. Mr. Smith?
You know, and to add on to that, we are not only at a standstill right now. We offered Mr. Aldine a contract. We hired him as our executive director in October-
A 6-0 vote.
On a 6-0 vote, consensus vote, and we still can't get the other entity to approve his contract. And I, he's given concessions. I told him not to do that, but he's given concessions. He was offered a four-month contract last meeting, which is ridiculous for anybody. We can't get the money from the county till we have an executive director.
Yes, sir.
Not a deputy director. We have to have an executive director. So this is probably what brought all this to a head. This man's taken nothing but abuse, and it wasn't for me. He's been abused for the last four or five months. Is that right, Gina? And for him to sit there and take it, I, I don't think I could, and I think you said it earlier. So I appreciate everything you've been doing, Jay, and your entire staff. I mean, they're, they don't know what to do. They don't know where we're going, and they don't know if we're going to move forward or not. So that, that's why this is coming to the entities.
Do you have something, Mr. Carrigan? Any, any further discussion? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
I move to approve the resolution as outlined by staff and authorize the mayor to execute the First Amendment to Interlocal Cooperative Agreement for the Truckee River Flood Management Authority. And by the way, we're supposed to look at this JPA every seven years to see if it's working, by seven years. So we will be looking at it again to see if other portions of this is not working.
Do you have a second? Ms. Ratty? Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Ratty to approve, as outlined by staff, the resolution. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed as 3 to 1. Is that all you needed to address, Neil, or is there anything else?
That, that's it.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Jay, for being here. Appreciate it. It's probably not, not too bad to come to an entity that doesn't abuse you.
Little record?
Absolutely.
Thanks, Jay. So Sean, we need to go to a labor relation so we can-
Yes, sir. We would ask for a closed-door labor session. You will not be taking action today, therefore you can do it at the conclusion of your meeting.
Okay, so at the end of the meeting, we'll make the motion to go to, okay. 7.1, now let's move on to public hearings. Consideration, second reading, and public hearing for Bill Number 2642, an ordinance providing for, and for the conducting and holding of the 2012 municipal elections. Why do we need, why do we need to do this? Why do we, why do we need to do this, Linda?
Well, Mayor, we absolutely don't have to have an election for our candidates because our candidates have been elected. Congratulations, everyone. But if there's a ballot question or anything else that we're going to do, then we would definitely have to have the register our voters ordinance in place in order to move that forward. So that is at your pleasure, council. You're in charge of the election, and you get to make that decision.
Questions, Mr. Smith?
Can we continue this till-
Absolutely.
Till someone decides to put it back on the agenda, or what?
We could, what is it, without contest? What is that called?
You could deny this without prejudice, allowing the ordinance to be brought back.
So if you want to do that, that would be-
Do we still have to have two readings at that time, then?
Yes.
Okay, is there any way to just, you know, continue this, the second reading, and tell someone asked to-
So you need to table it, is what we need to do, so it stays, until somebody takes it off the table. Is that right, Mr. Adams?
Well, you can do that. More as Councilman Schmidt said, you could take action on it, was this the, the second reading? Yeah, you could just take, hold this in abeyance, and then have your second reading, you know, down the road.
This is a second reading, is it?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, okay.
Hold off on any action tonight until your second reading. Now, I'm not sure. I'll have to look at the rules whether or not there's a problem between the first reading and the second reading. I mean, is there a time-
Because we have to, we have to publish it.
Yeah, but is there a time period that you have to make a decision pursuant to the second reading, or calendar of second reading? Or calendar a second reading after a first reading?
It's a public hearing, so I think we have to tell people that we're going to do the second reading again. That would be the only thing.
So, you're talking about, so can we continue this till April 9th, and then you can look at what you need to look at legally and let us know on April 9th?
I'll be happy to do that.
Is that okay with everyone?
I just don't want to get caught up in a time jam. And worst-case scenario, if we're caught in a time jam, we'll just bring it back again for the first reading down the road. And we, and ballot questions are due June the 1st, aren't they?
Usually.
So, we're only talking another 60 days with this thing, so we could, yeah, let's just continue it till April the 9th. I'll make a motion, continue it till April the 9th, and we have some better information if we have to enact on it, or we can postpone it for 60 days. Thank you.
Okay, one second before we do the motion again. I followed up here. It's my fault, I apologize. This is a public hearing, I am so I want to open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular item? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for action. Mr. Smith? Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to continue this item till August 9th meeting.
Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Questions?
April 9th.
April.
We could do the April 9th, if that's what you want to do.
I thought I heard you say August, I apologize.
April the 9th, I'm sorry.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to continue this to April 9th meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously.
May I ask a question?
No. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just, one of the things I would like to know is if there's any harm in passing the ordinance, even if we don't have to hold the election, so that if there is a late arriving request for a question, we're able to act on it.
I think the only one that becomes problematic is if we commit ourselves to having this now, then we could be somehow liable, liable, responsible for some cause to Wausau County down the road. So, I think it's cleaner to either do it now, or deny it now, or hold that off in advance so we don't create any type of difficulty with Wausau County and be held responsible to them.
Okay, moving on to planning and zoning. 8.1 CA-1-12, City of Sparks, second reading, public hearing, consideration, possible approval of Bill Number 2639, and ordinance by the City of Sparks amending Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to establish mobile vendor standards and providing other matters properly relating thereto. Mr. Ornellis?
Mayor Martini, members of the council, Armando Ornellis, city planner. Approval of this bill would allow for mobile vending on private property in the City of Sparks by amending the zoning code to establish mobile vendor standards. The city council continued this item at its February 27th meeting to provide staff the opportunity to solicit input from mobile vendors regarding the specific version of the proposed standards. That meeting with the mobile vendor community occurred on March 7th and was attended by, at least based on the signing sheet, by at least 11 mobile vendors. The ordinance, as proposed in, with your staff report today, has not changed from the February 27th meeting. Just very briefly, the plan commission unanimously voted to move forward a recommendation of approval to the city council back in January, and staff is also recommending approval. I can review the standards with you again, or address your questions, whatever your pleasure is.
Questions, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Armando, any, what type of discussions was on the March 7th meeting? Was it just a clarification, or was there any issue being discussed?
We went through the standards once again, and we clarified, there was, you know, questions, again, about the 300 feet. I think there, you know, frankly, there was some preference for allowing vendors to stay, to have more than four hours in one location. I think as the discussion moved forward, it was, it was recognized that to the extent that, you know, that we tried to extend that, that we might have more pushback from the, from the fixed-base restaurant community. And I think at the end of the day, I think we, staff felt that, you know, they were, they were okay with the standards as proposed.
So, basically, it was just informational, everybody's clarifying what was in the ordinance?
Yes, and I think as, as you and the rest of the council asked us to do, we went through them one by one.
And I spoke to Mr. Rundle before he went on vacation and explained to the group that, you know, this is something that if it's not working, they can come back to us and ask for changes later on down the road. So, he did make that commitment, if something is really glaringly wrong, that they can discuss it with us again. So, I think it's pretty fair, and I think these folks had a problem with it before, and now they're okay. And, you know, I was to several meetings where there were more than 20 vendors at those meetings, and I think they're all appreciative, and this is what they brought to us, wanted us to do something. I think it's a pretty good deal for everybody involved. Questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so open the public... Oops, Mr. Schmidt?
I was going to make a motion outside our present session.
This is a public hearing, open to the, the audience. Anyone in the public like to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Questions or looking for a motion? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make, move to adopt Bill 2639, amending Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code establishing mobile vendor standards, providing other matters properly relating thereto.
Mr. Smith? Second. Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve 8.1 CA-1-12, Bill Number 2639. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Comments from the city council and the city manager?
One.
Mr. Lawson?
I want to congratulate all of our candidates on being unopposed in the upcoming November election. The last I heard, that's never happened since 1976, or never happened, period. Never happened, period. That not only says a lot about our candidates, it says a lot about our employees. Obviously, the city council doesn't do the heavy lifting. You guys do it every day. So, thank you to the employees, and thank you to the citizens of Sparks.
Anyone else? Comments from the public? Catherine Brandhorst. You have three minutes.
My name is Cathy Brandhorst, Lisa Marie Presley, John Benay Ramsey, John Steele, and I'm also the United States President. I just wanted to mention, I've been watching Channel 20, and they did say that Scott was a year and a half old, and he was George Washington. But Scott has been looking very, very old. And so, I just wanted to mention this. Also, I have a very much concern about the Sundance Motel in Reno. I noticed Mike is missing, and there has been people held hostage next door to me in Room 133. And this problem has been existing because there are victims, or somebody knows a little bit too much, you know, what's been going on in the area. And I just wanted to mention that, too. Also, I went to church this afternoon, and we are still having problems with them being nailed to the cross, because these people are victims with the military. They are good people. They are the dismantlers. And these dismantlers are only here to help us in dismantling, because remember, they are very old, they're coming from Mexico cages, and they are existing anywhere between 1,000 years old and up. At RTC Bus Station, we had a lady, she was working there, and she was tested, she was 1,000 years old, but she looked like she was only 17. So, I just wanted to let you know why we're bringing dismantlers from the military into our area. And also, we have sent back the black people back to Memphis, Tennessee, because we know that they are all on death row also. They have been murdering in Reno, and we have stopped it. There should be a few that refuse to go back to Memphis, Tennessee, of course. Yes, we are. And so, I just wanted to briefly bring that up, too. And also, I guess I really covered everything that I wanted to mention, and the evictions have been causing a lot, a lot of problems from their places that they rent. They do not pay rent at all, so it just, they want to set bombs, they want to shoot people down inside their homes, because after they're rented again, they come back and they want their house back or their apartment back. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Catherine. You got that loud enough, Teresa?
Good job.
One other thing I forgot. Mr. Crutz? I have a receipt of a letter from Bill Menke Jr. concerning the, his, not his RV Park at the Marina. He would like us, and I would instruct you, I'll give you the letter so you can get the details, but look at the ordinance that we have for length of stay at RV Parks versus mobile homes. He's maintaining that due to the economy and due to fuel constraints and the price of fuel, that things have changed, and he would like us to take a look at that ordinance and see if there's something we can tweak there to make the lengths of stay a little bit longer or different. Is that something we can do?
For the record, Neil Crutz, Deputy City Manager for Community Services, would be happy to take a look at the letter, conduct some preliminary research, and return to an agenda in your near future for, to give the council the opportunity to direct staff to initiate a code amendment...
Okay.
...to do whatever it is that...
Okay.
...will be announced.
Thanks. Can I give this to you, Linda, for the record, and then you can give a copy to Neil? Okay. All right, any, anyone else? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.
Okay, I'll call the Order of Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting for March 26, 2012, with a roll call, please.
Chairman Smith?
Here.
Agency Secretary Patterson here. Agency members, Ratty? Lawson? Martini? Kerrigan absent. Schmidt?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Carey?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams? We have a court.
Okay, I will open it up for public comment. Anybody in the audience like to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the agency. Recommendation to approve the minutes of February 27, 2012.
Move to approve, it's chair?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Number four, report of claims that bill is approved for payment, February 9th through March 26th. For motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Number five, review, consideration, and possible approval of an exclusive negotiated agreement between the City of Sparks, the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Sparks, and 1864 Real Estate Development LLC for the redevelopment of 916 and 918 Victorian Avenue. Armando?
Chairman Smith, members of the agency board, this is the companion item to the agreement that was considered by the city council earlier this evening. Essentially, the, it's a three-way agreement that involves both the redevelopment agency and the City of Sparks, so we would ask that the agency board consider it, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay, any questions, comments? Julia?
I move to approve as, except, as presented.
Okay, we have a motion...
Second.
And a second. Councilman Lawson? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Okay, comments from the agency members? Anybody? Nothing? Good? Okay, see no comments, I'll open it up to the public for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the agency. No more comments? We are adjourned.
Mr. Carey? I forgot to move for a motion to adjourn to closed-door session. Can we open up the, can we open up the meeting again?
That's my bad. I thought you already had.
No.
Talked about it and moving it to the end.
I forgot.
Oh, well, I wasn't listening, and I thought, I heard you talking about it.
Can we reopen the meeting?
I had a lawyer moment, I guess. Yeah, you should reopen it, and then make your motion.
Okay, would somebody make...
Councilwoman Ratty asked me if we'd done that, and I said, oh, yeah, we've already done that.
So, what's the procedure? Just someone, can reopen the meeting? Okay, the meeting is reopened.